We have a pre-application 2501 for 309 East Dinehart. Who is Jenny or Vincent DeRozio here? If you'd like to come up and please have your name and address and know what you got planned.
It's DeRozio. Oh, there we go. So Vince and Janey DeRozio. So we have a lot at 309 Dinehart that we will be building on in the spring. And we, there's a 15-foot easement at the rear of the property. They were requesting we vacate 10 feet of it. We're still in the process of getting permission from the utility companies. So it's kind of to be determined if that permission is not granted, we will build appropriately.
Okay.
Anything else?
I think you're also in the, again, in later in the agenda.
Correct, correct, yeah, we can.
So this part is just basically for the easement part of the first application.
Yep.
Okay. Any questions?
This is located right next to Lamb and Company, is that right?
Correct.
Yep.
And I don't anticipate, I mean, it looks like some of the preliminary information you have, they're not official, but they're linear way that shouldn't be a problem.
Yeah, we're, the only one that's given us any pushback at all has been Idaho Power. I talked to them this morning and hoping, hoping that they're going to work with us, but still waiting to, waiting to find out.
Okay, I guess continue on with that. I don't think we have any other questions and continue to work with staff. See you later.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, with that, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda that anybody has any questions on? A lot to go up and discuss individually.
Slash request. Bill Nichols, our attorney for the evening, caught that on the first page of the findings for the St. Luke's Memorial Hospital District Foundation findings, where I put the number 38 in parentheses, I retained the word 12. So would you please request that I correct the number 12 on page one to say 38?
Okay.
On page one?
But it's, it's in, it's in that, it's within, it's in finding it back. In the consent agenda, we have another packet.
I got you.
Any other questions on the consent agenda as we can take motion with requests to change? That one, you want to try it or?
I, I moved that we approved the consent agenda with the correction that Meredith just told us. Then as written, I guess.
That work for you, Meredith?
Yes, and there it is right there.
Okay.
If you'd like to see it.
Cool, I second that. All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda with a minor change. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that agenda is approved. All right, we'll move to old business. We got design review 2423 Shoreline 2410, scenic route 2408. This is a public hearing, so I make a motion that we open the public hearing. Decided?
Second.
You have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Right.
Aye.
Any opposed? Right, you're open. So pivot north, northwest or north architecture, Kip.
I am Corey Barnes with North Architecture, representing Kip Wadsworth, owner. Before I get started, I want to thank Meredith and her staff. This has been kind of a drawn out process, some challenges with the site, but her team, Morgan, Kurt have been really helpful. And we do appreciate their effort and thoroughness and, and working with us on the site and their willingness to give us the opportunity to make some changes. So we are really appreciative of that. The project itself.
Could you give your name and address?
Pivot are Corey Barnes and then it's 116 South Sixth Street Boise.
Great.
So the project itself, it's located 2139 East Side Drive, currently has an existing cabin house and then a separate standalone structure. The plan is to tear down the existing house and then build the new one. Some grading challenges on the site made positioning the house fairly challenging, which is why a lot of the comments and concerns were expressed by staff. With their suggestions, their comments, I think we've come to a pretty decent compromise as far as how the site is oriented, how the house blends into the site. The structure itself using natural materials as stone wood to sort of camouflage itself. And then a great deal of effort has gone into as much tree preservation as we possibly can do within the 50-foot setback especially, and then removing a significant amount of retaining walls and things like that that were originally present and in the design. These sections really just express kind of the building height. We really studied these as well to make sure that the building fit per code as far as what we are allowed height-wise. And then these images really touch on and show kind of what we're doing to improve the lake shore. I know there was some concern over damaging and harmful construction to the lakefront. But as you can see in the existing photos, there is a significant amount of erosion at the lake shore. We're hoping to sort of take care of that with the new design and this is sort of that same shot, but what we intend to improve and for the house to look like with some significant trees that we're trying to maintain.
Okay. Wish there's any questions for Court at this point?
Corey, this is Dave. It appears in this photo, there's a lot of grass, right? Like landscape grass behind the
Yes, correct. Those, those will not, more of an artistic rendering, just to kind of show that, that there is going to be some natural vegetation areas mixed in with the plantings and the rockery walls to help with, with some of that erosion, sediment erosion at the, at the shore.
But you don't intend to have a big landscaped lawn that will have fertilizer and runoff?
Correct.
Thank you.
You're planning to keep the existing boathouse, is that right?
That is correct, yes.
Will you re-site it?
In due time, it probably won't, well, as far as I know, it's not part of this project's scope.
There's another picture that, was on before this one, I think? Or is this the only picture that, yeah, that one?
That's the existing, correct.
That's, okay, just, I look at to the right of that, is that the house right there that is in the next picture or?
No, the house next door is actually a house that is there currently.
Okay.
Yep. And then down in the next image, the new home is in the middle of those trees there.
Okay, any other questions for?
Does the previous, does a previous photo show the existing house?
It is very far up the hill. You can kind of see the roof through the trees where the cursor is. But it, it is much further back on the site.
And that's the one that's been demolished then, right?
Correct.
So all those trees in the front there are going to be gone?
No, the ones in the front of the view, the larger trees, you can see them sort of in this rendering. Those will remain. The ones where the house currently sits are not as substantial. And there is an existing roadway that kind of runs through the center of the site down to this same area that the, the trees are not as of significant value as these.
I think you've worked with Kurt too on a lot of the retention, right?
We, we did a lot of back and forth with Kurt and, and multiple times with Kurt and Meredith and Morgan on this and, and really kind of dove into the specifics, yes. And I believe if I'm not mistaken, there are some conditions revolving around the trees and Kurt being on site for approval, which we, we definitely do not object to.
Any other questions for the applicant at this point? Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, Meredith. Can I report?
Good evening, Commissioners, Meredith Todd, City Planner. As Corey stated, this is an application for design review, shoreline review and scenic route review. It's located on East Side Drive as the designated scenic route on that side of the lake. And then it is sited next to Payette Lake. So you saw that we had a nice dock picture in there. The applicant originally submitted this application in the fall, but staff noted during the first round of review that there did appear to be a pretty close encroachment into the lake area. We were losing a lot of vegetation in that closest 50-foot setback. On a technical level, things technically met a lot of the rules in that case, but we've observed a lot of significant vegetation loss, even when it was not proposed initially, when we get that close to the water on sites like this. So the applicant team did work with Kurt, Morgan and myself to scoot the, the building up the site just a little bit more into this slope. Some trees. Gonna fix that really quick. Sorry, so we've rescued probably about 25, 30 trees at this point by moving the building up the site quite a bit. And then the retaining wall design has gone from having some taller retaining walls that Morgan was concerned about structural engineering on to having eight, 18 to, 18 to 36-inch retaining walls down there in the shoreline area. In the conditions of approval relating to tree retention, we did, because of the concern with this site, include there needs to be orange construction fencing that's inspected before a building permit can be issued. So Kurt Wolf, the city arborist, will go out there and inspect that all of the trees to be retained do have the proper fencing around the drip line, which is the best management practice for those. And then we've also included a condition relating to if trees that were intended to be saved are lost. They work with the city arborist to replace them if and as they are lost before any certificate of occupancy can be issued. I believe that we do have the contractor in the room, if you have questions for her about the construction process and any care that they take specifically. But I'll move on to the rest of the application. From a dimensional standards standpoint, everything generally meets the dimensional standards of city code and impact area code. So the front setback, which would be from East Side Drive, is quite a bit greater than the minimum 25 feet. They're going to be meeting their scenic route requirements with the existing vegetation on site that's matured and well maintained. There will be a couple trees lost in the relocation of the driveway effort in order to facilitate better access for emergency first response. So currently it's a very, very steep driveway that I actually slipped and fell when I did a site visit on my way down the, down the slope. It was a sledding adventure, so they'll be remedying that so it's safer for emergency services if they should be needed. Their rear setback from the shoreline is technically greater than the 50 feet required for structures. And then the side yard setbacks are greater than the minimum required, so they're certainly not maxing out the developability of the site. The eve heights on each of these are highlighted in orange in your staff report as I did not get the chance to measure the updated building designs with the building scooting back. But the building is hypothetically getting shorter in the process of going further into the slope. We're staying about the same. So we would just ask that we can actually review those to make sure down to the inch that everything is appropriate in size. And then similar for the lot coverage, it is a theoretical reduction from the small change in the site plan, moving the building farther up on the site. But those are identified in orange because they need to measure them one last time with the updated materials that all match to confirm exactly what the number is. Either way, it's less than the maximum allowed for lot coverage for the site. And then on snow storage, the area that's officially identified on the civil plan that I was looking at in earlier version only showed one small area next to the main area of the driveway, but there is a significant amount of space available on both sides of the driveway leading to the home to accommodate snow storage, so it just needs to be drawn and calculated in order to get to that 2,112 number. Other than that, we didn't receive any major comments of concern or constructive criticism. The sewer district has asked for the ability to inspect the existing accessory structure prior to granting a sewer permit because they're currently auditing to make sure that the number of permits that they are providing matches the number that have been requested and properly paid for within the system. And then there have been more than normal comments from the arborists on this site due to the older growth, mature tree nature of the site to make sure that we can get the best possible benefit to the community of lake users and visual impact minimized for the area. You'll see a comment from the Big Pay at Lakes Water Quality Council reminding the applicant and any construction managers to do all best management practices and because it is a shoreline adjacent property, someone has to be the responsible party for stormwater on the property and Morgan can explain that in greater depth if you wish. I have not received any public comments to date. And you have recommended conditions of approval and motions within your packet and I'll stand for any questions.
Wish there's any questions for Meredith? That, or good engineering?
Hello, Commissioners. Yeah, this is an easier, the second review was much better for me on this one. With the updated documents that we've received, I do think that they can meet the intents of the city's drainage management guidelines. There's a few other clarifications I asked for in my latest review, including showing where their existing surfaces are located on the property to make sure we're not, we're not crossing crossing things that shouldn't be crossed or burying things that need to not be buried. And then I just have my normal comment in there that if you have any retaining walls over four feet tall, they need to be engineered by an engineer licensed in Idaho. That is most of my comments. Please let me know if you have any other questions.
All right, Commissioners, any questions for Morgan? Okay, this is a public hearing, so we'll go to public comment. Is there anybody online or on the phone that wishes to comment regarding this application? If you're on the phone, you may need to hit star six to unmute yourself. Anybody online or on the phone wish to comment? Hey, is there anybody here in the audience that wishes to comment regarding this application? Last to call, anybody online or on the phone to comment? Okay, we'll close the public comment. Commissioners, discussion, anything you have questions on before we close the public hearing? So any questions for the staff or the applicant?
This is Dave, is that garage staying where it says existing garage or is that being removed too?
The existing garage is remaining, Commissioner Petty.
But they're still within lot coverage with the garage and the house, great.
Yep.
Any other questions for staff? Before we close the public hearing? All right, with that, I make a motion, we close the public hearing?
Second.
You have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, hearing is closed. All right, Commissioners, discussion. Seems like they pretty much addressed everything needed other than a couple of conditions, which will be satisfied prior to any building permit with Morgan some of the measurements, but it seems like they have plenty of space.
Yep.
Pretty clean.
Questions for me here, Robert?
Dave lives, any questions?
No questions for me, I agree, it's pretty clean.
Yep, no questions for me either.
The only one I have is about the, there was a patio within the 50-foot setback and Morgan, I think you said that's been taken out in the current plans?
I know there are some pathways that are leading down to the boat ramp now. And I, I know there's a technical definition on what is considered a patio, there's a width. Meredith might know that, that width better, but I don't think it classifies as a patio.
Yep, so I contacted the landscape architect and initially there was a bulb out that counts as a patio with a diameter greater than 15 feet. And so he has been working on adjusting that to be a pathway that is not greater than eight feet in width. What people choose to do with their lawn furniture is none of my business.
Thank you. I'm good with the rest of it.
All right. Then I'm open for motion. I move to approve design review 2423 shoreline 2408 and, oh, scenic route 2408 and shoreline 2410 with the staff recommended conditions of approval.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second for approval, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, motion is carried, you're approved, all right, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to the re-submission of design review 24, scenic route 2411. This is also a public hearing, so I make a motion that we open the public hearing.
Second.
And true, Bill Nichols is online, if I do any instruction, you may wish.
Given a motion and a second to open the hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. With that, now we start, if we have Bill to make an address in the beginning?
Yeah.
What we were going to do?
Yep.
So, okay, Bill, the city attorney is going to provide us with some comments regarding this re-submission. So Bill, if you're ready?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is essentially, should be treated as a new application. And so you would go down through the, the code requirements on both the design review and the scenic route and address each of those elements and make a decision with regard to these, this as though it were a new application. So that's the best way to, to put it, just treat it like your brand-new application. Ask whatever questions you have, get whatever information you need in order to make a decision.
Okay. All right, thank you, Bill. That's all we need for now, I guess. Any questions for Bill that we have up right now? Okay, with that, we'll go to the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. For the record, Abby Jermaine with Elam and Burke, 251 East Front Street, Boise, Idaho, 83701. I'm here on behalf of my client, the applicant, represented tonight by Ken Echanis and Jeff Hatch with Hatch Design Architecture. Also on the line is Steve Thiessen. He is also with Jeff's team and has been working on this project. Meredith, would you like me to drive or?
You can just say next.
Okay. Um, what I would like to do, just as a housekeeping matter, I, I do intend to reserve some time for rebuttal. I would assume there are going to be some comments from both staff and also the public, and I would like the opportunity to address those once those have been spoken. I would also like to refer the commission to my procedural memorandum, which was provided on December 12th. That outlines the procedural posture that these applications are in and provides some of the background for the narrowed review of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Ultimately, we are seeking approval of design review application 2428 and scenic route application 2411. First, I think it's worth noting the nature of this project and how this project has evolved since it was originally presented. So as Mr. Nichols indicated, these are new applications, but this is not a new project. So this commission has seen this project before, but the project itself has vastly changed and evolved since you first saw it. This is not a typical self-storage facility. When I typically think of self-storage, I think of something very industrial-looking, blank walls. This storage facility has been designed to be a high-end recreational facility. It is hopefully going to be individually sold as individual units and it will be managed by a property management company. This project also now includes numerous site amenities that include a pedestrian pathway, generous landscaping and some other improvements. In general, the proposed project now, as it's currently designed, actually improves the aesthetic nature of that area. And Meredith, if you could go to the next slide. I think this is indicated by an overview of what is currently existing at this location. You can see this project is not the first of its kind in this area, immediately adjacent to the property to the west. And that's the, the, yep, right there, there is a currently approved storage facility. That facility is much larger than our proposed project and it also contains a lot less of the high design standards that we are proposing for this project. Also, you can see the property to the south, that is also a commercial use. So the areas adjacent to this property already contain commercial uses. So I think it's important for the commission to understand that this is not the first of its kind as it relates to commercial use in the area. If we can go to.
Can you say area to the west, what part of the west do you mean?
So it is directly behind the proposed project. The storage units that have already been approved are directly behind, yep, right there, as, as Meredith's indicating with the cursor. That is where the, the currently approved storage facilities are located. I want to touch just briefly, if you could go to the next slide, Meredith? Oops, one more. Oh, maybe more, I just need a rendering. Yeah, that's fine, um, thank you. So the project originally came before the commission in 2023. Originally, the applicant had proposed four different applications, conditional use permit, planned unit development, scenic route and design review. What is extremely important for the commission to note is that the only land use entitlements that are needed to build this project are the conditional use permit and the scenic route and design review approvals. The PUD was only sought by the applicant in order to, in the future, subdivide and individually sell those storage units as condos on a plat. There is no other reason for having the planned unit development. I think there was some confusion initially on why the planned unit development was being proposed and what maybe was necessary when you typically look at a planned unit development. In this case, it's strictly for the ability to individually sell those lots versus lease, lease them. The other thing that's important to note is the actual project itself and how it's changed. So on the left, you can see that was the previous application. It has what I would characterize as a more industrial look. I won't say minimal landscaping, but it definitely doesn't have the robust landscaping that we have now included within the project. And I believe that that's really the reason that this commission recommended denial of the application back in 2023. The applications did go to the county commissioners and the county commissioners approved the project. And that is, that is key to this discussion this evening. The Board of County Commissioners approved the conditional use permit and they approved the planned unit development. So the only items up for discussion and consideration are the scenic route and design review applications. The Board of County Commissioners were very clear. The Board of County Commissioners were very clear in their decision. They stated that the applicant has demonstrated compliance with the relevant approval criteria and the application satisfies all the necessary standards of approval. The board further stated that the land use requested in this application for self-storage is approved by this decision and shall not be disturbed or modified on remand. So what that means is the decision of whether or not this project can be on this, built on this property has been decided. The issue for this commission to consider is how this project is going to look and how it's going to be landscaped. The board also made clear that in considering the scenic route and design review applications, the commission's input should really be to look at the updated plans, landscaping and determine the amenities that would improve buffering. The reason I indicate that is because that is within the findings of facts and conclusions of law of the board. And it was their decision when they approved the conditional use permit. Again, the applications before this commission, scenic route and design review, we believe that we have met all the criteria within both of those application standards. And the only comment I believe that staff really had related to snow storage. Meredith, can you go to, I'm not sure which one it is, but it's the previous. I think it would be up maybe. Yep, that one. So initially, when we had proposed this application, we had been working with the prior planning staff, Mr. Brian Parker. And he had provided us comments and direction to include mechanized snow storage within this site plan. Based on that, this is what the applicant proposed. What you can't see very well on this is the snow storage that's included in the front of the property where Meredith is zooming in and, and highlighting with her cursor. That snow storage, Meredith, when we met with Meredith, we finally had the opportunity to speak with her on Thursday of last week. And she indicated that she had some concerns about that snow storage because it was located where the landscaping would be located. When we had developed this, we had actually worked with the landscaper and the arborist to select plantings that would be salt tolerant and also would be resistant to having the snow storage there. But regardless, she indicated that should be moved. And so we, we did, we revised that. If you can go to the next slide. Oh, another one, I think. Yes. So the requirement under the scenic route and design review standards is 33%, with removing the snow storage in the front and re relocating that to the rear of the facility. I think if you zoom out, Meredith, they'll be able to see where it is now. We have met the requirement. We have 33, 33, excuse me, 0.2% of snow storage. The other thing I'd like to indicate is that the applicant has designed these buildings to be able to retain snow storage on the roofs. We discussed this aspect with Meredith on Thursday as well, about the ability to utilize that. And in doing so, that increases our snow storage to 66.9%. So we almost double the required, the requirement of snow storage. So I believe that that, that one outstanding issue that was raised by Meredith, we have addressed. And that information is included in the commission's packet. The one thing I'd like to briefly touch on, and Meredith, can you go down? One more. Oh, no, another one. One more. One more. Yeah, perfect. There have been a lot of comments related to groundwater and stormwater on this facility. What I would like to remind the commission is that groundwater and stormwater approvals are not criteria and conditions or standards of scenic route and design review applications. Those are items that must be reviewed and approved prior to receiving a building permit and engineering approvals. We had not received comments back on our proposed preliminary stormwater and groundwater plans until we had the opportunity to meet with Meredith last week. We did receive feedback and we immediately sent those comments to our civil engineer and were able to address those comments and have submitted the finalized data and proposed groundwater management plan as well as storage, stormwater, excuse me, storage operation plan. So those are also included in your packet. I would remind the commission, though, again, that is not something that is a requirement of SR and DR approval. That is a requirement that has to be met before we put a shovel in the dirt. And my, my client is well aware of that and will certainly abide by all of those requirements. If the commission has concerns about those aspects, I think it certainly is appropriate, as Meredith has suggested in, in the staff report, to actually have those as conditions of approval, just to solidify that in writing. We all know we can't do that until, we can't actually construct until we have those approvals. So again, I would just remind the commission, the only applications before tonight are the scenic route and design review. The project itself has been approved by the county commissioners. And we are here seeking the approval of the, the aesthetic and the landscaping aspects of this project. I'm certainly happy to answer any questions. And again, I'll reserve some time for rebuttal in order to address any comments that might arise.
All right, commissioners, any questions? Line, any questions?
This is Dave Bob. You show some pretty impressive trees in your landscape design. I'm wondering how many years it will be before they grow that tall?
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, I would defer to Jeff on, on that question. I know in our original application, we did submit preliminary renderings as well, what those, what those plantings will look like day one. I, I would have Jeff have to answer the, the question of how long it will take to develop.
Jeff Hatch with Hatch Design Architecture, address is 200 West 36th Street, Boise, Idaho, 83714. Commissioners, thank you for your time this evening. Commissioner Petty, to answer your question, we submitted our application originally. The request was to render out the application in four seasons, spring, summer, fall, winter, and then do that at proposed growth as well as growth maturity. The renderings in our presentation tonight are for growth maturity. There are a range of species. Those species maturity range between 10 and 30 years. But as shown here, the majority or average of that maturity would be around between 15 and 20 years.
So it will actually be some time before that blank wall is covered with vegetation?
Commissioner Petty, based on our renderings of the proposed planting, we feel that the blank wall will actually be landscaped sufficiently within, you know, the, the proposed planting year. And also, since our previous application did have a blank wall, we've added ground level glazing, modifications to the metal paneling, jogs and offsets in that, as well as additional glazing. So we no longer have just a blank wall.
Any other questions for applicant before we go to staff report?
Nice one. One question about the pictures that you got in the packet here. The first one is just a blank wall with one tree on the right. Is that, that's the one that we started with last time, right?
Commissioner Moss, you are correct.
Okay. And then as you go down the, the rest of the pictures, this is the improved version. All will probably six or eight of the pictures below it. Is that correct?
That is correct, Commissioner Moss.
Okay.
Any other questions at this point?
I guess I'll speak up. I'm really curious about the stormwater, just in general. There's, from what I'm seeing, there's stormwater. Well, there's a collection system of sorts that, will there be things within the asphalt that melts the snow, collects it, goes into an underground? Or it dissipates within the ground? Or is it just like, it's no storage place, you're going to plow it? Round it up? Or is it a combination?
Commissioner Thompson, great question. From our original design, we had an oversized drainage swell. That drainage swell is, I would say more appropriate for high alpine areas because if you do something that's subsurface and it's subject to freeze, the performance of that subsurface drainage feature can be problematic. So our civil engineer with her swell was designed for both our onsite and also native water coming into the site. So our, our drainage swale is oversized for our site. In addition to that, with our groundwater monitoring, which was required by Central District Health as well as for stormwater monitoring, we did an additional month of monitoring to ensure that we had appropriate data for that. And the size of that swale was, was adjusted for that. Grading onsite is intended to be able to stockpile snow as proposed. And then as that snow melts over time, that would melt into that swale and then percolate slowly back into to the groundwater. So it's anticipated in kind of twofold. One, if you get, you know, and I, in a perfect world, slow, steady melt over time, this would be achieved. But in reality, you have a thaw in the spring that's usually fairly abrupt. You have a warm day, you get a lot of moisture on, on the site that melts all at one time. And that swell is really built to be able to absorb that extra percolation at one time and then slowly charge that back into the soil.
Yeah. And I'm familiar with, with all of that. So, but that is, your system is just a retention basin and things will slope into that around the site and then additional snow removal will occur within the site. That's correct.
Yes.
Other questions? Because these storage condos, do they have bathrooms within them or is it heated? Place of sorts, what, what's within the interior of these structures?
Commissioner Thompson, great question. So through our PUD application, restrictions were applied to the, the project. So based on the Central District Health recommendations and evaluation of our site and our soils, we're allowed to have two public restroom features. We have one on the west side of the development. We have one towards the street. And so at, at this time, we have adequate capacity for those two public restrooms, but there would be no additional proposed restrooms for the development.
Okay. So then what is shown on the site plan is just, there's your septic as well that's eating that. So, okay, that makes sense. Good.
Do any of these other properties that located to the north and the west view, the north, northwest view, do they have the same stormwater retention system as, as what you're proposing here? Or is it, is, is it too soon to tell? Or is that even relevant? I'm just thinking of the other buildings around. How are they doing it effectively?
Great question, Commissioner Moss. Being casually involved in Vince Beard's project and aware of that adjacent to us as a neighbor. His project's also a commercial development. He's required to retain all of his stormwater onsite. So he is, is preserving that onto his parcel. So we're, we're not necessarily concerned with stormwater to the west. Stormwater coming from the north and south, there is some, what we would call fugitive stormwater or historically natural stormwater that was flowing through our site onto Vince's property. Vince has resolved that to some extent and the oversizing of our swale is also designed to address that.
So you're not going to get deluged by the neighbors then, is what I'm asking.
So our, our groundwater monitoring was specifically geared towards looking at that event and evaluating it so we could design that swale oversized for that seasonal additional stormwater off of our site.
Good. All right. Any other questions for the applicant this time?
Thank you.
All right. Meredith, staff report.
Okay. So as Ms. Jermaine described and as Mr. Hatch described, this is an application for design review and scenic route review to construct a 37 unit storage facility adjacent to the South Sampson Trail scenic route. It has been a designated scenic route running north to south into the community and then becoming Spring Mountain Boulevard. The proposal before you does not include splitting these via a plat into individually retailable storage units. It just includes the buildings with the 37 units managed in single ownership. I have received multiple revisions based on my staff report throughout the last week addressing the snow storage on top of the landscaping area. We did discuss that while you can choose salt tolerant plants and weight tolerant plants, the reality of weeks like this is that small first year plantings probably will not do well. So they have made revisions based on those comments to relocate the snow elsewhere on the site. Mathematically, they do hit that 33% mark. They're welcome to store snow on the roof of the building by retaining the snow that falls on the building, not by putting more snow on top of it. So that's just not part of the calculation. We just use the pavement area to be cleared, needs to have space for its own snow. You have the history of this property and the various applications associated with this application in your packet, so I won't belabor that topic unless there are clarifying questions. I did want to note for the commission that we did not receive the extent of groundwater information, building plan information, traffic information or engineering information as described by the Board of County Commissioners in their final conclusions document. But since we are treating this as just a design review and scenic route review application, the decision has been made that it's up to you guys whether or not you can make decisions on the design review criteria with or without that information in its finalized form. You have deferred review of that to staff in the past. You have also said that you are not comfortable making a decision until you have that information. So staff would defer to you on whether you need that. Once we get to the criteria for design and scenic route review. What else? Have not received a subdivision preliminary plat. So that may or may not come at a future date. And then it is unclear to me as staff what the relationship to the design review and previously approved planned unit development conditional use permit is supposed to be. But we've been directed by the county prosecutor as well as the applicant to just treat this as a new application. So that is what we are doing. Further into the staff report, I did include recommended potential conditions of approval if you should choose to make a decision today. I can't recommend either way that you make a decision because I think that you need to determine whether you have what you need to feel comfortable making any decision either way this evening. But if you were to make a decision, at a minimum, the conditions that you see listed in your staff report are what would be necessary in order for staff to facilitate the building permit issuance process. I do think that there's a lot of information that we do need to see relating to feasibility. I did speak with Central District Health today to clarify how some of the septic sighting information is made. And he indicated based on the most up-to-date site plan that he isn't sure that the test pit monitoring data can give him the information he needs to make a decision on the septic. So last Thursday's meeting with the applicant, I did indicate to them that if anything in the site plan has to change as a result of managing for the engineering conditions, then we will need to go back through design review. And so this is an at-your-own-risk type of decision-making for the applicant team. So if that septic sighting needs to be changed based on any of the engineering information in the future, it is at the applicant's risk that they might need to come back here to revise the site design. What you do with that information is up to you as the commission. Further in there, to the notes on the scenic route requirements, there are the necessary number of plantings for the design review code standards. For the most part, we've seen metal buildings before that don't include natural features. The applicant has. The applicant has provided that they might be willing to pivot to natural materials or natural mimicking materials in the design if that is the request of the commission. So if you would like to go through the design standards individually and take consideration of what does or does not meet the standards in your opinion, you can do that. But you have seen metal buildings in the past that just worked out that way. But if you want to see difference in design, you can recommend that as part of a revision. There will be a bench and bike pump adjacent to the public pathway. There's another condition that requires that an alternative pedestrian plan be provided. If there should be disturbance to the new Sampson Trail pathway in construction, as well as a note within here to continue working with the county recreation planner, Dave Binghamman, on ensuring that the pathway, if it is damaged, is repaired to the standard it was originally constructed to. And that the entrances be protected using stop signs as well as any other indicators of pedestrian foot traffic in the area. In terms of general commercial code design, a lot of it alludes to the presence of unique storefronts or unique characteristics to define pedestrian oriented space. Because this is in a rural buffer zone that doesn't really include a commercial corridor yet. There aren't really unique storefronts or characteristics to mimic and it is not a actual commercial facility for shopping or anything. So it's hard to indicate that this is a pedestrian oriented facility in itself because it's not drawing in foot traffic to drive revenue. No stonework is proposed, so I'm not too worried about appropriate stonework as opposed to that that might fall off the side of the building in poor weather. The roofs are proposed to retain the snow, but don't appear to be shedding into that pedestrian pathway area. I think that there is a little bit of a question, especially this week while out at the various places where snow gets sloughed and stored and shoved so that we can continue moving about the community. How well the frontage of this proposal will work when there is as much snow as there can be. Further into the report. There are transom windows that are added. So those are the higher up, skinnier windows that you see facing the scenic route. In the past, this commission has not been super fond of the transom windows as a solution to having non-blank walls facing streets. But I would defer to you on whether you're satisfied with the transom windows or would like a more actual window to mimic that design characteristic and provide some transparency into the development with the knowledge that there will not be window shopping in this location or the similar that we use windows for. And then I would leave it to your judgment to go through the design review and scenic route review criteria that I showed in your staff report to determine if these are ready for a decision or if you need more information. I stand for any questions.
Thank you. What was the list items that you're still waiting on? As groundwater, the.
Let me go back to my comment. I'm not. Yes, I am. Let me scroll to that location and then I'll fix my screen sharing. So based on my reading of the findings and conclusions document from the Board of County Commissioners, the items that I do not have that are listed in that order are a subdivision preliminary plat. I would need to review any updated site and grading plans that were submitted this week to see if they address the specific groundwater and stormwater concerns where the request was full compliance with the applicable ordinances. In my review of the materials submit before last Tuesday's meeting packet deadline, I did not have that. I have not seen building plans that have provided the footings to determine where they're located in relationship to the groundwater. The groundwater data has not been submitted as of three o'clock this afternoon to Central District Health to further determine whether the site is of adequate quality to accommodate the requirements for septic services for the development proposed. And I am unsure of whether or not the submission of these items is required for the approval of the subject applications. Based on the testimony of the applicant, the instructions of the Board of County Commissioners and review of this as design and scenic route review only. So you're welcome to ask more questions.
We normally would normally have those items before we make a decision.
In a normal world, we keep all of the applications attached to one another until they all have achieved a final decision. So that we don't.
So what did you just say then? Yes, we do have that.
No, but. No longer attached to one another. So it is up to you whether you feel you can make a decision on the designer view and scenic route criteria. Given the different moving information.
Yeah, but if some of these items change, it could change what we're would be seeing.
Yes. And if the design is changing, then we will need to come back through design review.
The design as far as everything layout, pretty much any changes of what we're seeing tonight, would we key it back to come back to?
It definitely would come back because of what we do here tonight.
I can neither guarantee nor deny.
If it's the same, then not necessarily. But they are missing potentially some items that could make some changes that would need to come back.
Meredith, I have a question about the placeholder for legal.
Yes.
Is that, was that the preference from our attorney before we started this?
Yes. So initially I had asked the legal office to draft like a one page summary explanation of what you are supposed to do because I also need that guidance in guiding you through this process. But after further discussion, both Bill Punkinney, who's unable to be with us tonight and Bill Nichols, who you do have online, should you seek advice? Said, oh, we can cover this with this is a new application, treat it as a new application and focus on the criteria and how you can apply them to this application you have before you.
So regardless of what the county commissioners did in overruling our decision twice, we have a new application that has to follow the guidelines for both design review and scenic route.
Correct.
Got it. And then in addition to that, you so far have not seen any of the required submissions that the Board of Commissioners put on this project.
Correct.
Any other questions for Meredith at this time? Okay, we'll go to Morgan and Engineer.
Hello, Commissioners. My comment review letter should be in your packet and they are based off of the last version of the plans and documents that were submitted. I haven't had time to review or comment on the items submitted on Monday. So this will be, some of these might have been addressed, but I haven't had time to look at them thoroughly. So I broke up my comments in a few different sections. The first section is site plan and general comments. I made a comment regarding the snow storage behind the pathway. We typically see 10 to 12 feet behind a pathway to accommodate snow. But there's always the caveat that if it's not enough area for the snow, it can always be trucked offsite somewhere to be determined in the future by the contractor responsible for that. There are some tall retaining walls on the property and another standard comment that if it's over four feet tall, it requires a structural engineer to design and stamp the plans. Echoing the comment that if this is to be sold as individual units, I need to review a plat and ensure that they meet our digital data submission standards. There's a general comment in there that during construction, identifying a traffic control plan on how pedestrians will be moved along the pathway that's constructed and not put in danger. Let's see, the road, South Sampson in this location is in the county, so they would need to work with the county for access points prior to construction to get the access permits. Stormwater, I did review the stormwater report and it seems like it will meet the city's drainage management guidelines. We do need to verify the groundwater levels and I have some comments about that in my red lines. Basically, I talked through this with this engineer for the project. And the concern is mostly like if the pond is designed in a spot with high groundwater, you have to accommodate for that because it can't be full and capture all the stormwater that you're planning on storing there. I did also send them their approved report for the property to the west so that they can accommodate that into their design. I know there's some site work happening where they're discharging in the historic location. So hopefully the new version of the documents take that into account. It's very much a draft report, so they need to finalize their sections and explaining more of that. But that's a pretty typical approach at this level of like, yeah, we've thought about it to this point and we'll elaborate on all these sections after we get approvals and prior to building permit to get final engineering approval. I believe that is most of my comments. I'll just mention that their pond is sized for the 10 year storm. And then it overflows off property past that. So they're detaining what they need to or they're showing what they need to on their plans so far in the calculations. And we'll stand for any questions.
I'm sure there's any questions for Morgan. Okay, then we'll go to the public comment. On this item, is there anybody on the phone or online that wishes to comment regarding this application? If you're on the phone and you're muted, you may need to hit star six. Be online or on the phone. Okay. With this item, we did have a request. One of the neighbors that does have their attorney, I believe, present that wishes to comment. We're going to allow some extra time for that, for that presentation from their attorney, if they spent the time to appear and do that. So I believe it's, I'm not sure exactly the name of the attorney, it's Morrow and Fisher. I'm here for Averson. Okay.
Thank you, Commission. My name is Dan Goodman. I'm with Morrow and Fisher. Our address is Four Ogden Avenue in Nampa. Today I'm here representing Joe Baugh and Kimberly Averson. They're residents here located at 515 South Sampson Trail. And they are going to be negatively impacted along with other neighbors if this development proceeds forward. And in particular, if you decide to approve the design review and scenic route applications today. From our review of these applications, and it's been tough keeping up on this application frankly, because it continues to change. We agree with the city staff report that there are some notable deficiencies in these applications. We consider those deficiencies fatal to these applications at this time. The first being that there is no subdivision preliminary plat application. And as the city attorney mentioned to you, you need to treat these applications as if they're a new application. So I encourage you to ask yourself in a scenario where you're treating these as new applications with no prior procedural history, which of course this project is fraught with. Would you at this point expect to see a subdivision preliminary plat application? And at what point would you expect to see it? Bear in mind, the applicant has stated on the record numerous times that they intend to subdivide these condos or these storage units into storage condos and then sell them off. So again, in that scenario, would you normally see a subdivision preliminary plat application? Because I think you would. That's one of the issues that we've identified. We did have concerns about the snow storage plan. Sounds like most of those concerns have been mitigated, but I will address one other issue that we've identified. Additionally, and again, as the city staff report mentions, it sounds like the city has not received an updated traffic analysis. Bear in mind that a traffic analysis, the results of that traffic analysis depend on the design itself. So this isn't just some extra thing that, you know, could be here, could not be here, and it's not really relevant to the design. No, it's directly relevant to both the design and the public health and safety. That should be here today, but it's not. And then finally, we have yet to see an updated site and grading plan that adequately addresses the groundwater issues that have been touched on a little bit. And I'll go into a little bit more detail about those issues and why we're so concerned about them. So first, in running through these three primary issues, I'd like to just start off with this question about the subdivision preliminary plat application. Now, as I mentioned, the applicant has stated on the record, both in front of Valley County and before you today, that these 37 storage units are ultimately going to be subdivided and sold off. Okay. And yet we don't have a subdivision plat application before you today. Now, McCall, excuse me, the Idaho code under section 50-1308 actually has a definition for subdivision, of course. What the applicant intends to do here meets that definition. So rightfully, this is ultimately going to be a subdivision. Or at least for purposes of the definition and for purposes of submitting a subdivision plat application, this project certainly requires it. I'll also point you to the McCall City Code, section 3.16.06, and this is subsection C3. It demands that there's evidence, quote, evidence of subdivision design review specifications enforced and approval granted. Again, we don't have that here. There's some, there's a lot of issues with the Valley County findings and conclusions. I suspect the commission has some sense that, you know, that was an unusual set of findings and conclusions, the amended ones that we that were issued, I believe, signed September 30th and then recorded in late November. But despite some of the issues in those findings and conclusions, even those from the county say that the applicant is to submit a subdivision plat for county review. They never did that with the county. Given the interactive process between the county and the city here, because this is in an area of city impact, you too should have received at some point or another, from going back and forth here, a subdivision plat, but you haven't. Additionally, those findings and conclusions mention that the design review and scenic route applications are to be considered after submission of the subdivision plat. And yet we're considering them now without that subdivision plat. The bottom line is that because the applicant never submitted a preliminary plat despite intending to subdivide, as they've stated, the design review and scenic route applications must be denied today. Now, I'm just going to briefly touch on the snow storage because again, it sounds like they've redesigned their snow storage plan again. Fortunately, that new plan addresses some of the issues that we had from the prior plan. So I can skip that. And I know you've read my written comment. That written comment addresses that too. But again, you can ignore that portion of the comment at this point because it sounds like they have fixed most of the issues there. One issue though, that hasn't been addressed is it sounds like the applicant still intends to store the snow by pushing it up against the fencing. And one question I have for the commission is have you seen a design proposal with regard to this fence? Do you know what kind of fencing it is? Because we've looked through the applications and we haven't seen one. Given that this is a design review and it's along a scenic route, which creates these additional design issues that need to be addressed and really creates a higher design level that has to be achieved in a scenic route area. It's surprising that we haven't seen a picture of what this fencing is going to look like, whether that fencing can withstand piling snow up against it. How tall is this fence going to be? We still don't know. Now, I mentioned the traffic analysis. And I kind of covered the obvious issue there, the issue of public safety. But again, I'll just remind the commission that this was another requirement of the county's findings and conclusions that an updated traffic study is necessary, but we don't have it here. Typically, that updated traffic study would be reviewed in conjunction with the preliminary plat. So you can see why normally we would have a preliminary plat here and why these applications would work together. Now, it doesn't mean that they can't seek. It doesn't mean that they can't seek that preliminary plat at a later time, but considering that you have to make a decision about the design based off of uh, what they put forward, put forth to you today, and what's included in what they put forth is the fact that they intend to subdivide and, and sell these individuals' storage units off. Means that you do need to take into account the fact that there's no preliminary plat provided to you. And then finally, and I've left this for last because I think it's the most important and the most concerning. We have not seen a site and grading plan that adequately addresses these groundwater issues. There's clearly shallow groundwater at the site. Now, the applicant had provided you an original geotechnical report or investigation dated July 2023. And that report found that there was groundwater, uh, between 3.3 and 6.6 feet. And there are newer measurements that the applicant conducted. And has provided to you that show, those, those measurements were taken throughout 2024. And they show that groundwater is as shallow as 0.17 feet below the ground, just two inches below the surface. Um, and I'll note that, 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 uh, shallowest measurement, which is, uh, you know, two inches below the surface is directly at the edge and underneath where the, uh, where the proposed building force foundation is supposed to go. And I wonder, do you feel comfortable approving this design, given that we still don't have adequate assurances from, uh, from central district health confirming that, uh, this design plan, the, uh, groundwater issues that are present and the septic system that they proposed, that all of that is gonna be okay. We don't know if that's gonna be okay or not. So why would you approve this design prematurely? I think that would be a, a serious mistake. Another thing I'd like to mention is that that geotechnical report, the same one that mentioned that they found groundwater between 3.3 and 6.6 feet. Again, we know that in reality, it's actually quite much shallower than that. That same report recommended that the applicant put their footings 36 inches below the surface because of, uh, the frost that happens here in the winter. So we have a proposal in which the footings are gonna go 36 inches below the ground, so three feet below the ground. We know that there's consistent groundwater at 3.3 feet, and if you look at the, um, the groundwater reporting of those test pits throughout 2024, we have through many months throughout the year, and certainly in the spring and summer, water that is well within that three foot range. So I guess we're gonna have water directly underneath these buildings right up against these, uh, these footings. And I'm wondering, has the applicant provided you any assurances or explanation as to how exactly those building materials are gonna interact with the, with the groundwater and not cause issues for the public? Now, I'll leave you all with this, you know, ultimately, the Idaho statutes that are most important in this context are those put forth by the local land use planning act or Lupa. And Lupa has a core purpose that is expressed in those, in, in that act. In section 67 dash 6502 of the Idaho code. And Lupa makes very clear that its express purpose is to protect health, safety, general welfare, the environment and property against hazards and pollution. So I ask you, Commission, do you feel like in approving these, if you approve these applications today, you are following Lupa's core values? Because we don't think you would be. We think that the only way that you can comply with Lupa's express purpose, not violate Lupa and stay in line with exactly what you as the planning and zoning commission is supposed to do in a situation like this, the only way you can comply with Lupa is to deny these applications. Make the applicant get you exactly what you need to make a clear decision. Thank you.
Hey, we have anybody else here in the audience that wishes to comment regarding this application?
Hi, I'm, uh, Joe Baugh. I live at 415 South Sampson Trail, directly across from 450 South Sampson Trail. We've lived there for about 27 years and uh, I'm pretty familiar with the groundwater around there. I know how bad it is. We have it on our property. We just put in, and this is significant, we just put in an RV garage on our property this year. You made us put windows on the ground level. You made us put a 30 foot, uh, setback and many other things associated with a scenic route. I don't see any of those in this particular occasion for these people. They seem to think that, well, you don't put windows in a warehouse is basically what it's saying. Well, fine, then maybe a warehouse doesn't belong on a scenic route. I see their pitchers. I can't even see their damn pitchers. They got artificial plants up in front of it that are many years old. As a master's degree in forestry, I can tell them that those trees aren't gonna be there for 15 to 20 years. That height. We can't even see the buildings. How do we know what is the actual look of those buildings? All we see is artificial trees and a little pitcher. I can't see how anybody could approve it. I'd be had a lot more if they were honestly to come out and show us the building and then say, here's some plants and it may look like this, but no, it's all hide the building behind the plants. So we can't see what it really looks like. I don't see anything in here that indicates it's any different than their previous ones in any significant way. Some cosmetic sort of things. I don't see any difference. You've denied this twice. The county denied it once and some mysteriously last summer came around outside of the public comment and, and changed their decision. Something smells there. I don't know. That's another story. What we have here is basically something that doesn't fit in this situation, doesn't fit in the community, doesn't fit the scenic route. It doesn't meet the design review. They made some cosmetic sort of changes, but they haven't really done anything to make this building compatible. They haven't done setbacks. They haven't, actually, I think it believes in the scenic route is supposed to have your vegetation is not supposed to be linear. These is completely linear in a very small, narrow spot with some very large trees right next to a building. They're not gonna happen. I'll tell you that right now. We have some very large trees and we got 30 feet to grow them in. Or more actually to our house. This is cosmetic. I think Sarah Palin said it best. You can put lipstick on a pig, it's still a pig. And that's my belief. And I hope you deny it. Thank you.
I am Scott Harris. Uh, I live on Ilka Lane in McCall and Cam. I apologize ahead of time. I wish you were putting in more beehives. I just want to reiterate the groundwater issue. Um, actually, the groundwater on 61523 and Test Pit 4 was three feet, not 3.5 feet. And it maintained, uh, in 2000, or 2023, 24, the measurement. For four months, it was less than two feet, far less than two feet in Test Pits 1, 5, CDH 1, and it was maintained for those four months. This was a year of low total moisture accumulation, 23, 24, according to USDA 10 year measurement of accumulated moisture. And I've included a graph in the letter that I sent to you that shows that it's well below the median for that 10 year period. 2025 is starting out above the median and we're gonna see that groundwater even higher in 2025. Inevitably, that's gonna become surface water in the lower parts of this site as well. So that needs to be taken into account in, uh, measuring runoff and handling runoff. Safety is a huge issue. We walk on Sampson Trail every day and people speed by us on Sampson Trail. Out of, out of county plates, turning right on Pearson to access Highway 55. This is an alternative route. Uh, storage facilities are heavily used by commercial vehicles. We've got a new storage facility planned here on Store It, uh, at the corner of Sampson and Elo that will have over 900 storage units. And those tradespeople and commercial vehicles will be going back and forth on Sampson Trail to avoid the traffic on Highway 55, particularly during the busy time periods when we wait sometimes five minutes, six minutes to find a clear spot to pull out into traffic. Foot and bicycle use is growing. The Sampson Trail, safe route to Schools Trail that runs right in front of this property is there. That intersection is quite busy at times with schoolchildren, people going to and from school, commercial vehicles back and forth. We really, we need to know that we're gonna be safe. I think that's the number one issue here. Um, and I, you need more information, folks. So do I. You got 155 pages yesterday afternoon of highly technical dense material. How in the world are you to go through that and assimilate it in order to make your decision? Thank you. You guys have a tough job. Cam, I'm sorry.
Hey, is there anybody else here in the audience that wishes to comment regarding this application? Is there anybody else on the phone or online that wishes to comment regarding this application?
Yes.
Okay, uh, yeah, if you could give your name and address?
Yes, I'm Becky Ryan at 1200 South Sampson Trail.
Okay.
Um, I too have a great deal of concern about this project in this location. As has been mentioned, South Sampson Trail is a narrow road, increasingly pedestrian. The safe route to schools is a wonderful addition. However, South Sampson Trail and then to Elo and to Farm to Market are increasingly road bike routes, including teams that ride these road bikes at high speeds. The idea of putting a 37 unit storage facility on such a narrow road so close to schools, school bus routes really is, it's potentially like adding 37 businesses. Because we all know that storage units around here are used as business locations. Traffic comes and goes during the day, um, as people go to and from their business sites. It's just incompatible with safety. And that's my primary issue, of course, is safety. It's only becoming a, a greater issue and more important as population grows. Also, the water, the groundwater is a huge concern. Nobody really seems to report things clearly and transparently, um, with time to evaluate. It's a big concern for those of us around here who have septics and wells. We just don't know the impact because the evaluations of potential impacts and groundwater levels are inconsistent and incomplete. This is just not a good move for this neighborhood.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
There anybody else online or on the phone that wishes to comment? And if you're on the phone, you may need to hit star six.
Hello?
Yes.
Yes, Jane Gallant, 520 Cronling. My concern is the traffic too. We come out of our driveway and onto Sampson Trail and sometimes I have to look and before you know it, there's a car there or, and they, and they do come fast. So that is a big issue is the traffic. So and, you know, I, I agree with what the attorney said. I agree with what Scott Harris said. I agree with my other neighbor. And, uh, I'm just in, you know, second everything that they say. But traffic is a concern and plus because it is a scenic route. I'm, I'm concerned about, you know, how this is gonna look. Because, you know, we have a scenic route for a reason. So yes, and I, I agree with what, um, the previous, uh, neighbor said regarding the, you know, walking. Now we've got this new trail and the walking, the kids going back and forth to school. So yeah, it's gonna be a, it's, that's a big concern of mine and that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
One last time or once again, anybody else online or on the phone that wishes to comment? Okay, at this point we'll close public comment. I think you have time for rebuttal, if I can answer any of the questions or comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman Commissioners. Um, I will try to rebrief. I know you have other agenda items this evening. Addressing some comments, um, that were received by the public, the attorney for one of the, uh, opponents frankly, is just factually incorrect as it relates to the decision by the Board of County Commissioners and the findings of facts and conclusions of law. Those decisions are in your packet. You have this specific language. Nowhere in those decisions did the county commissioner say that a subdivision plat needed to be submitted before design review and scenic route application. The very reason for that is the applicant may never submit an application for a subdivision plat. What is required to construct this project is a conditional use permit and scenic route and design review approvals, not a subdivision plat. The only reason the applicant chose to go forward with the, the PUD application was to have the ability to sometime in the future, subdivide and individually sell those units. So that is, that is incorrect. Um, I would also like to address the comments about groundwater and stormwater, um, that the attorney made. Again, these should be conditions of approval for the building permit and for the engineering approvals. They are not conditions or requirements of scenic route and a design review application, which are the applications before you. The county commissioners have made clear, the project is approved. It has a conditional use permit. I also want to correct the record on the statements related to the traffic analysis. In the, in the board's decision, which again is included in your packet, it specifically addresses traffic safety. It states, the board is satisfied that the traffic analysis previously, previously submitted by the applicant provides sufficient evidence regarding traffic safety. It then goes on to say that, um, in a matter of fundamental fairness to all interested parties, the driveway location should be evaluated by the applicant's traffic consultant prior to a subdivision plat. Now again, if we choose not to do a subdivision plat, that requirement would not be applicable. However, we understand that that was something that the Board of County Commissioners stated they wanted to see was the location of the driveway. We would suggest make that a condition of approval to the building permit. That's a way that it can be dressed, um, even if we choose not to go forward with a subdivision plat. There were, again, additional comments on groundwater and stormwater. It's not a requirement of design review and, and scenic route approval. Those are evaluations that have to be done by the city engineer and by, uh, the planner. That will be done. That information has been provided in the supplemental materials that we provided to this commission and to staff. We understand that those materials were provided, um, on Friday. However, we only were able to meet with staff on Thursday. So we immediately turned around the additional information as soon as we heard that there were comments of additional information required. That is not in any way a criticism of Ms. Todd, um, or Morgan. I think this is a situation of a workload and understaffing issue. And we certainly understand that, um, there, there may not have been time to review that. However, we submitted this documentation back in December. This application is now two years from when it was originally, um, presented. This application must be approved. Um, if it's not approved tonight, then the developer is going to miss another construction season and that's not feasible. Again, as it relates to groundwater, that has to be done before a building permit is issued. So there are safeguards to ensure that that meets the requirements. I wanted to address a couple of comments by staff. There were, there was discussion about what the Board of County Commissioners required. Um, again, that was a traffic study, subdivision plat, um, groundwater, stormwater. Those all relate to the subdivision plat or the building permit approvals. They do not relate to the scenic route and design review applications. The Board of County Commissioners were clear on that. When they mentioned those requirements, it's tied to a subdivision plat. We understand that may not occur in this situation, so make it a condition of approval for the building permit. There was also a comment by Meredith regarding the pedestrian pathway during construction. Certainly happy to comply with any of those, um, requirements or plans to ensure that the pathway is restored if there's any damage of construction. We also want to recognize that in the event that there were comments as to the groundwater and stormwater information as to the groundwater and stormwater information provided that required changes to the site plan, we would have to come back and do that. We understand that. The issue here though is that we believe we have submitted that information. All it needs is final review. And if, if changes are necessary, we'll come back, but we need approval in order to meet the construction this year. I know if you're like me and you're probably not, but I think why do we need approval in February? We can't break ground until the snow melts. Well, that's because we have to go out for bid and we have to get someone on contract. And if that's not done immediately, the 2025 construction season is out. So that's why approval is so necessary this evening. Are there any questions that I can answer for the commission?
I'm not too familiar on how this condominium development works and the storage units and everything else. But you say that if you have a subdivision plat that's required, you don't, you have to have a traffic study that goes along with it. If you don't require a subdivision plat, then you don't have to have a traffic study. Did I understand that correctly?
Mr. Chairman Commissioner Moss, no. So I, we have done multiple traffic studies in this case. The only comment that was received from the Board of County Commissioners was that the traffic consultant relook at the location of the driveway. And that was based on comments that we had received on the safety of moving the driveway, the primary access from the south end to the north end to allow more site visibility and distance in that driveway. We have conducted the traffic studies and the analysis. The only comment was to look at that driveway location again. We are certainly happy to have the city engineer and staff opine on that location, but we believed that moving that driveway would increase the safety.
So I guess my other part of the question is if you have subdivision plat and you're saying, well, we might want to use it in the future or we might not want to use it in the future. How does that affect the rest of the information there?
Mr. Chairman Commissioner Moss, that's a really good question. It doesn't. Whether or not we do a subdivision is irrelevant to the criteria that we have to meet to build this project. We have to meet certain criteria before we get SR and DR approval, which we've done. That's in the submitted materials. As it relates to groundwater and stormwater, those are items that have to be met prior to the building permit. They're not requirements of SRDR. So that's, that's where the difference is, is that as Meredith stated, typically you would see all of these applications together. That's not the case here. The Board of County Commissioners issued approval on the CUP, which is the only land use entitlement that's required for this project. And they sent it back to this commission to deal with the aesthetic aspects of this. You know, there was a comment made by the public about, well, all we're hearing and talking about tonight are the cosmetic aspects of this. And that's true. That is what this commission was instructed to look at. The items of whether or not this project is appropriate for the site has been decided by the county commissioners. There were also comments about the setbacks not being appropriate. That is not correct. We have provided necessary setbacks. Those have been reviewed by city staff. So again, we have met the requirements of the scenic route and the design review standards.
Thank you. There was some comments regarding the fencing where I don't see any of the plans as far as fencing type.
Mr. Chairman Commissioners, I think we would be happy to provide that information. I don't think to date that has been required by staff. It's just not something that was really on our radar. The snow storage is in the back of the property. So as it relates to the fact that it would be going on to the pathway or whether or not that could withstand the snow storage, I think that's probably a moot issue because it's in the back. But again, we're certainly happy to provide that information or make it a condition of approval before a building permit.
Actually, it's in the county commissioners' findings of fact that without specifications for reinforced fencing, it is difficult to determine snow will not trespass onto neighboring properties.
And Mr. Chairman Commissioners, again, I don't believe that that indicates that there is a requirement that is a statement that it's hard to determine whether or not there will be snow movement. Again, happy to have it as a condition of approval. We can show the specs on the fencing and ensure that there won't be any kind of snow trespass.
Commissioners, any other questions at this point? One of the site plans here has four buildings where a lot of them have three. So I've seen a little bit of inconsistency. Are there only three?
There are only three, yes. That must be a previous sketch. And you know, it's difficult. There's a lot of information in that application. What we intended to do was show how this project has progressed. So the original design did have the four buildings. Now it has three that accommodates larger stormwater retention, snow storage, and allows for the increase in the landscaping as well.
Any other questions, Commissioners? Do you have any, I'm guessing they don't because it's not in here as one of the, who mentioned that, what the buildings look like prior to all the landscaping?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you for bringing that up. Actually, there are renderings in the application that show what the site will look like when those plantings are just initially planted. That has been included in the packet. Jeff, is that the? I believe that is.
And on those renderings, I'm having a hard time tracking like which side of the property I'm looking at. So is there a way to run through those renderings and point out this is the north, south, east, west face?
Commissioner Rock? Again, Jeff Hatch designed. So this is the previous application rendering looking north from the south side of the property. This would be at our proposed emergency entrance looking southwest. This would be from the very southern portion of the property, looking back northwest. It's the same rendering as the previous application location. This would be looking due west on the property, central to the location of our access. And this would be looking southwest from the primary entrance on the very northern portion of the property. This would be looking northwest from the very southern portion of the property. This would be looking due west again, as previously mentioned.
Could you go back to the northwest one? Figure out how that lays out. So is that all supposed to be one building?
Commissioner Lyon, because we're looking down that road, we actually have both buildings in that view, but the second one is staggered. So you don't see that we have an emergency exit between those two buildings in this view.
Okay, so that's just.
That would be two different buildings.
So there's three buildings in that picture.
Third building would, would be behind.
So you don't see. First one right here, it looks like she has a gap between.
Yeah, I'm just, so you're looking. They're looking northwest. That doesn't seem to match up to.
Is that a long Sampson Trail?
Correct.
So that would be the frontage of Sampson Trail with the initial plantings.
Commissioner Petty, that is correct.
Thank you.
Commissioner Moss, in regards to your question on the condo, in many jurisdictions in Idaho, we don't even start a condo plat until after building permit is issued. That's because when you do a condo plat, unlike a subdivision plat, you actually have to have the building, the physical building surveyed. And so it's, it's more common place for us to do a condo plat after building permit is issued. My other comment was in regards to the neighborhood indicated concerns about setbacks. Their zone is R1 and we are not in the R1 zone, which is why we have totally different setbacks. And you can see in these renderings that we do have, which was one of the comments previously mentioned by this planning zoning commission to have pedestrian level glazing, which we have incorporated throughout the frontage of this facade.
So the subdivision plat, you're covering yourself the future, the future, basically, I might want to do. Does, does that take into effect that if you decide to sell these particular units, a change can be made to them without a replat? I'm into semantics. I don't even understand myself, to tell you the truth. But does that have to happen before you would be able to actually market these particular condos in a, in a commercial setting or?
Commissioner Moss, through the condo plating process, we generate what's our restrictions, CCNRs, which are reviewed by city staff. And there are regulations in place there, both from a operational standpoint as well as a municipal standpoint. For someone to say, take a wall out between two units and merge those, that would be something that would have to go through the same process again, an amendment of that plat. So what we, yeah, when we build that, that would get surveyed based on what is permitted. And then if, at that time, and then whatever from there would be modified, would be modified through this exact same.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff, I have one more question. In Morgan's letter, she states there are still design review fees that are unpaid. Have they been caught up? Or will there, there will be now be more with your new submittals, correct?
Commissioner Petty, I have the owner here with a credit card if we need to pay anything, a checkbook. But our intent would be to make sure that we're current with any fees due. I know from our December 5th, the request of items itemized out for this new application have been provided, which is why we're before you today. The balance of the information, we really truly feel that we can satisfy from a building permit standpoint, all of our stormwater retention, all of our snow storage, all of our seepage requirements are to the west of the property. Nothing is proposed that would be affecting our scenic byway route nor our frontage. So if that was to be modified in the future, we feel that we can work with staff and if need be, if the change is significant, to come back to this commission. But we do feel that we can confidently preserve the frontage of this building as intended by this committee.
Commissioners, any other questions for the applicant at this time?
Thank you.
Meredith, I know there was some questions in a couple of different parts as far as making sure these applications fit or fit within the criteria of both the scenic route and the design review. Do you have those criteria to pull up somewhere like we do the 12 steps or 12 items of initial use?
Yes.
I think it might be wise to look at those to make sure everything applies correctly. No, we're still getting information.
Let's start with the design review criteria, which we have A, B, C, D, E, F, G. Criteria A is the project is in general conformance with the comprehensive plan. That is the first. Want me to just read them off?
Well, I think let's, we should make it, we read each one and determine if it fits the item since we're still gaining information. In light of what we've done with the conditional use permit. Thoughts for the commissioners?
Are we still in public hearing or are we in deliberation?
We're still in public hearing to make sure if there's any additional questions we have for staff, we can ask that.
Meredith, read that again. Good choice. Read it again.
The project is in general conformance with the comprehensive plan.
Unless you want to discuss now or?
Well, I guess so is that the CC designation?
The comprehensive plan is the one that has the visions and goals for the community as well as the future land use plan. So there's some statements further in the staff report about places adjacent to various different land uses. So your comprehensive plan sections within the staff report include our community's vision of McCall being a diverse small town united to maintain a safe, clean, healthy and attractive environment. It is friendly, it is a friendly progressive community that is affordable and sustainable. And then relating to the comprehensive plan vision for this area in future land use designations, this is a future business park and residential buffer. This land use designation is intended to provide for office, light industrial and other employment facilities. A mix of uses is allowed. Business park is applied to properties with land characteristics suitable for business parks. Good access, flat and can be buffered from adjacent uses.
Thanks, Meredith.
I think maybe we just do the same as we go to each item.
So criteria B is the project does not jeopardize the health, safety or welfare of the public. Criteria C, the project conforms to the applicable requirements of the zoning ordinance and subdivision ordinance as enumerated in section 3.1601 of this chapter, which is the designer view chapter of the title for planning and zoning.
What was the staff report on that one?
The general conformance, I think that this is one of the ones where meeting engineering requirements, for example, as well as B fall into, do you feel as though you have enough information to make a determination on B and C for health, safety, general welfare, as well as do we know that it can meet the stormwater requirements that are enumerated within getting engineering approval? So sometimes Morgan will tell you, I feel pretty comfortable with this, even though I don't have all my information yet. Or sometimes she says, I don't know yet. I need more information. So Morgan, which one do you choose today?
I think most of the information is there. It's just more clarification on the groundwater levels where the detention area is proposed. Just like I mentioned previously, to make sure that we're not designing something that's going to be full or have some sort of standing water in it, taking away from the design volume that's required.
That reflects the newest groundwater study that was done? Or have you had a chance to look at that?
This is from the previously submitted. There are test pits near it, but it misses, I believe it's test pit number five and it's missing information in the groundwater tables that describe what was found at test pit number five. So there's no information. It shows up on the, on the, it shows up on the exhibit showing where the test pit locations are, but it does not have the details that come with it.
So you don't have enough information to even make a decision or make a presentation about that?
I don't know what the groundwater level is there. The report states it is 3.3 feet below, but I asked for more information in the red lines of where that number came from.
And again, that doesn't reflect the newest groundwater study or report.
Because that test pit was not reported in the newest study, correct?
I am unsure if test pit number five is elaborated on in the newest report. I have not had a chance to dive into it in depth. But the previous reports that I have reviewed and commented on, test pit number five was missing from their plans and details about that.
So that's an unequivocal, I don't know if I have enough information.
D, the project will have no substantial impact on adjacent properties or on the community at large. I don't think that is my call to make. That is your call to make. E, if applicable, a subdivision design review document has been reviewed and approved by the commission in lieu of these design, in lieu of the design guidelines. There is no subdivision plat, so there is no subdivision design review guidelines submitted. F, for projects in the shoreline. F, for projects in the shoreline review environment zone, project will not have an unreasonable and adverse impact on visual quality of its setting or the water quality. This is not in the shoreline zone. And G for projects in the scenic route, the project will preserve and enhance the scenic quality of the street or highway. This is on the South Sampson Trail designated scenic route.
So I had a question on that. Uh, how far back does the, you know, preserving and enhancing the scenic quality of the street or highway go? Does it take the, do we have to look at the entire property? Or is it just the Sampson Trail facing side?
The buffer extends from the center line of the road, 150 feet perpendicular to that road center line into the property. So if you're driving in a car and you take in the sites, you can see further than the 25 foot area where landscape plantings are required within the scenic route. So your judgment as to whether you can see deeper into the site and that impacts the scenic quality of the scenic route is part of that scope.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have a dimension or a measurement from the center line to the base of the building?
Right away is 50 foot. So half of that's 25. And then you have your pathway easement of 15 feet and then the, so there's a 20 foot off of the right way. So 30, 45 and a half, 45 feet.
Not where the center line, from center line. So from the center of Sampson Trail to which is where the buildings are located. Then we have the criteria for the.
Yes, let me zoom back up. Then your criteria for scenic route review are specifically the commission shall ascertain whether the proposed development improvement or use will block or disrupt the visibility of significant views or features. And shall determine whether the development improvement or use will be compatible in terms of setback bulk, height, design, finished materials, signing and landscaping with its immediate surroundings and the desired visual quality of the scenic route.
If there's any other question or any questions on that? Are there any other questions for staff or the applicant before we close the public hearing? Actually, uh, let's see, do we have Bill? Bill, do you have any additional comments based on the conversation or presentation and comments that we've had?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think the only comment I would have is whether, and you've attempted to do that, but you might run down with staff if there's any additional information that has been received that needs additional analysis to provide to you before you make a decision. For example, Morgan mentioned the, um, missing information from the groundwater study. If there's some specific things that staff feels like they need to have or additional time to review and come back to you with a report, a supplemental report. We need to know that from staff. And of course, that, that would imply keeping the public hearing open, continuing it to a specific date certain so that that information could be fully vetted.
Hey, great. Thank you. With that recommendation, is there, what items the staff, I think we already asked this, but still waiting to receive for further review?
I think that in my judgment, the one piece that I don't feel wonderful about moving forward without is a determination from central district health on the location for the septic system working out. After speaking with Mike Reno, who's the septic expert for them that usually comments on our applications. And he reviewed the groundwater information that we're, we've received pretty quickly this afternoon. He still doesn't feel as though he has the information he needs to confirm that that site is going to work out. Because there was not a test pit location on top of where that septic system is. But that is not my risk to take on in terms of construction timeline. That is something that will hold up a building permit being issued, full stop. But I do not have that information. So it's important that the applicant understand we cannot issue a building permit. And we cannot change the design on the fly without understanding that the septic system will work. And that, that could be a costly decision, but it's not my decision to make.
Or was there any other thing for you? I know you mentioned some items of the groundwater as well.
Yeah, the groundwater, I need more information to finalize their stormwater design. There's many ways to design stormwater, but that also has to take into account the existing groundwater for the entire site as well. So where it's located and similar risk, if it has to move or change significantly to the site plan, I think that would trigger it to go back to design review also. So it's a, it's a similar situation.
Does the septic system, is it applicable to the groundwater situation?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I figured it must be. So yeah, you're kind of at a quandary there. I see.
All right, commissioners, any other questions for staff before we close the public hearing?
Jeff Hatch has designed, I apologize, I like to talk to you. So appreciate the opportunity once more. In regards to the two concerns, concern for groundwater monitoring, which is related to also our septic. This was something that was also discussed at length and evaluated with our re-submissions to the board of county commissioners. At that time, it was determined that if we cannot substantiate septic that is relevant to the site, can this project function without it? It can. And we have provisions that we can work through with the building department to accommodate that from the proposed project. We would by all means hope and continue to propose to have public restrooms on this facility. But if it comes to pass that we cannot, we can still operate, uh, the proposed project. In regards to the concerns for stormwater, um, similar to, to when we reevaluated this back in 2023, we had four buildings. We went down to three buildings. If the size of that has to, to, uh, be reevaluated once more, we would be shortening buildings from the west moving east and we would not be modifying the street frontage nor the aesthetics along. So, um, you know, from a general pedestrian, the, the look and feel of the development would stay essentially the same. But at that time, staff would determine if that needs to come back in front of you. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner, is any other questions for staff or the applicant before we close the public hearing? Any additional information staff wishes to provide us? Fair all comments? Okay. Without a make a motion, we close the public hearing.
Second.
You have a motion, a second, all in favor? Any votes? Okay, deliberations. I think there's, still have a hard time without, yeah, staff having all the documents and or time to really evaluate it. I mean, we know groundwater is an issue in this area. And that can affect things quite a bit. And it seems to be, you know, if it was a very slight change from the previous study to the current study, that would be one thing, but this seems fairly dramatic. I think somebody higher levels of qualification besides ourselves would need to determine if indeed the buildings remain in the same location. And if we're looking at 150 feet into the property or well from the center line, that, oh, it seems that could definitely make some changes in it. So I do have some concern there. I'm just wondering too, with the, the scenic route with those buildings that close to the road, does that impede that view? How would that affect it? Especially knowing that those trees are going to be several, quite a few years before it's kind of growing in. I have a little bit of thoughts there as well. And my general thoughts for now.
I guess I'm next.
You can't be, anybody?
Everybody else, I'll, I'll get my, speak my piece here. I, I agree with you, Robert. The information that staff has is not complete and is not complete enough for some really major decisions about how this project, what, how and, and why this project should proceed forward. You just, Meredith, you just gave it to us in its entirety right there. And what you just said with the septic system and how it's going to work. But I do understand that Mr. Hatch said it can proceed on without the septic system as proposed in the original, just the original presentation. So, uh, I'm still kind of, still kind of concerned about that, but also, um, the subdivision, the traffic study kind of confused me a little bit. Also, I think I've got it in my head how it would work or how it can work. Other than that, uh, I think I, I voiced the same concerns as you, as you, Robert, that, yeah, that coupled with the scenery that they're going to put as far as the landscaping on the bit in front of the buildings, that's, that's a ways out, but, and how does that affect the scenic byway? I don't, you know, I don't, I don't really know, or I guess I'm not clear on it as I should, I think I should be in order to make a decision about this. So given those things, I guess I'm about where you are. I would have trouble passing on this project.
Yep. Uh, there's a lot of information here. There's just lots of stuff to go through. And there's inconsistencies a little bit. I wish we had a one that was clean. There's another condo project that was built, uh, is it four years ago? It was along Boydston. And that one, trying to think about how the scenic was on that, because that's a scenic route as well, I believe. And, and they put berms and I think there is some vegetation, but the buildings are similar. They don't have the, the windows or the, the, some of the features that this one does, but it is further away off of, uh, out of the right away. So I'm just trying to get a feel for what should the scenic route look like, um, as far as what we're looking for. So I'm, but yeah, I'd just kind of like to see a little bit. It all be put together, just seems like some of the old stuff and yeah, clean it up, do the, do their things. Give it a month and then we can make some decisions, I guess. My thoughts. On, with you mentioning that, kind of a thought would be, I mean, we see it, seen it in an application here on the lakefront. We typically will see the land and then land with the building superimposed on it. That might be in value, this one with it. Gives a better feel exactly because these renditions, it's angles, but not based on, okay, here's the road. Here's what you're going to be looking at from like we see on the lake. So I don't think you can do quite the same, but I think, yeah, that's a good thought. I like that.
And give a little more reality to it after.
Yeah, give a little bit more of what we really would see there. So Dave, how about your thoughts?
So I, um, I understand Mr. Ekaneus, um, wished to get building this year, but I think that's, it's also his responsibility to bring us a package that's complete. You know, if you eliminate the bathroom and the, um, septic system, because you can't perk the groundwater, then you have a totally different design that you have to come back to us with again. I have, can, I, there's at least three design review-ish, um, alphabet letters that I have concerns with and absolutely this is not, this does not belong on a scenic route for me. I think, you know, and again, it's like the Sam's comment, if you, if you get rid of the building along South Sampson, because you've got 150 feet from center line, does, is the project even work for them? So, I would be either of the opinion to deny it or give them a couple of months to get some more information for Meredith and Morgan.
All right, Dana, your thoughts?
Um, yeah, I agree. I, I don't think we have all the information we need. Um, I do believe we need the groundwater data. So I'm kind of leaning more toward delaying, um, and giving them some time to get the information to the staff that is necessary so we can review a complete application.
So concerned about the groundwater, stormwater, the grading and that impact to the design. I'm concerned about the septic and, you know, central district health and the impact to the design. But I'm actually willing on that count to put that risk on the applicant, right? It's on the applicant. If it comes back and they have to change their design, then they get to go through this fantastic process over again. Where I'm really kind of hung up is I can't see what it will look like from Sampson Trail. Like looking at the renderings, I see it from one angle. I see it from another angle, but I don't see like the full thing together. I'm concerned that, um, behind the, uh, landscaping that is presented in the renderings that I don't see enough of the building. So I can't assess, does it really fit, meet our design standards, you know, with the windows, with the variation, um, in the, the, like the different kind of depth of the wall, right? So like, is that enough variation to make it not look like a blank wall? One of the things that I'd also like more information on and like to be able to visualize better is like how the proposed amenity actually works in that space. And is it actually going to be a useful amenity that we can say, yeah, that'll actually kind of fit the bill. So, um, my inclination is to, to send it back to the applicant and give them more time to, to give us. And I liked, uh, uh, Robert's suggestion of maybe, you know, before and after, you know, here's the land, here's the land with the building on it. And like a better view of just what is it going to look like, like head on from Sampson Trail? Uh, I think that would help me make a decision here.
Okay. Well, based on Ray's input, does seem, we're pretty much in agreement to give them more time or have them bring back some additional information, what we talked about with some renderings, um, have time for staff to do the review. Groundwater, well as the other information, potentially more information from central district health. Do you feel that the next meeting would give them enough time or what staff, do you feel you would have enough time for, for us to continue this, keep the public hearing open and reopen, I guess, and then go to the March 4th meeting?
If there can be a two week turnaround, we could get there. So from today, two weeks.
If you have some information that you need to proceed, okay.
I don't know. I don't know. So I don't know if that's. Reasonable to get. Would the applicant be able to do? Do you feel their stuff? That would give you enough time to get the needed information? I mean, they have the water, so it's actually up, but the additional information, it's that. Okay, well. Applicant feels that he can get that information to. Staff and staff would have time to evaluate it and be prepared for a March fourth meeting. So. With that, let's see, do we need to reopen the public hearing? So I make a motion, we reopen the public hearing.
Second.
Motion and a second, all favor.
All right.
All right.
So. Now I make a motion that we will continue this item. Which would be sort of go. Design Review twenty four twenty eight and Scenic Route twenty four eleven. To our March fourth meeting to allow time for the staff to review. The groundwater. And any other information that they recently received. As well as some additional renditions, renderings of the property, so we have a better feel. Of how it's looking.
Do you include the septic system in that?
Yeah, as well as the septic information if we can get that from Central District Health.
Can I run through my notes to make sure I have what you want in there?
Yes, please.
Okay, you would like more information on suitability of septic. More information on visual impact to the scenic byway, including the building superimposed on an image of the site. Like to see them building potentially scooted further off of South Sampson Trail. As the the trend of potentially needing to be more compatible with the scenic route guidelines. And then staff to review. The groundwater information in more depth along with all of that to. Understand whether that which is submitted works.
Yes.
Anything?
Think that covers this. I would include all that in my motion. We have a motion and a second. Let's do a roll call.
Chairman Line?
Yes.
Commissioner Moss?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Paul?
Yeah.
Commissioner Rock?
Yes.
Commissioner Petty?
Yes.
And Commissioner Milfith is absent.
Okay. Motion carries. Thank you. Okay. I'm fine with moving forward, but does anybody need a quick five minute break?
Make a motion, we have a five minute break.
I don't know if we have the motion, but we're going to take a quick five minute break. Um, we will. Re-adjourn at six fifty one.
Still going to come back.
Awesome. I will turn down my mic. Thank you.
Meredith, can you make the community room picture bigger for us? Or for me anyway?
I will try. You can do it. So if you. If you hover over the image of the community room, there's like three little dots. And if you, I think, right click. It should say spotlight. And it should be spotlight for me or spot or pin for me or add spotlight for everyone. Did you win?
Sort of add spotlight. Oh. There it is.
You did it?
Been for me. Okay.
Okay.
And also when the room is speaking and they're displaying, you can click back and forth between the two.
Wow. Okay, any other audio visual questions before we come back? To business? No?
Okay, it's a nice room. It's too bad we can't all be there.
We miss you.
Can't show up. All right, we're going to re-adjourn the meeting. And we'll go on to new business. We got Design Review twenty four twenty nine for three oh nine East Einhardt, Vincent, Janay, Dorazi. Montembeau C.
Yes, it's us again, Janay and Vince Dorazi, address four zero five Knights Road, McCall, Idaho, eight three six three eight. We are here trying to get. What is it? Design Review twenty four twenty nine approved. It will be at three zero nine Dine Hard. McCall. Basically, this will be a be used as a CrossFit gym. We have a CrossFit gym out of our garage currently that we have significantly outgrown. We are looking for a space. This will be hopefully our new space. It is a part of the. What is it called?
Village Square Commercial Center.
Village Square Commercial Center. And very much in line with the rest of the businesses in the commercial center. We are building kind of to the max capacity of that. Vacant lot. The one thing that we kind of mentioned earlier in the meeting was that vacation of the easement in the back in the rear for utilities. That's kind of the one thing that's up in the air. If that doesn't happen, we will just reduce the building size to accommodate that fifteen foot easement. So, yep, good job. So with that, it'll be a two story building, steel commercial structure. The, yep, right there is kind of the general plan. The bottom picture is the front looking due north at the building. So a couple of things have changed. I guess one main thing has changed. We in talks with Meredith. We are going to add on a. Awning or like a overhang for the sidewalk to keep the sidewalk clear and safe for people walking along that sidewalk. And for our members and potential members coming into the gym. The bottom half of that right now, we kind of have just this surround of the door wrapped in wood with that new awning. We will have the total, the bottom minus the the Wayne's coating be covered in wood. So a little bit more wood wrap on that. The other elevations, you'll kind of see the the west and the east. Those. Lines kind of going up the side, those will be trellises. There's not a ton of vegetation on that lot currently. There's like two dead trees, which is very sad. So by adding those trellises, we're hoping to. On the west elevation picture, that will be sun facing, so some sort of quick growing vine that likes sun. And then on the east elevation, that will be shade. So again, some shade loving vine that is also quick growing. Yeah, you can see in that picture that the kind of two dead trees that are straight in the back of that lot. Other than that, there's not much vegetation besides just the the natural sage and grass.
And I just wanted to note as well, given the setbacks in there and the proximity of the other building, the Lamb and Co. Building. There isn't a ton of space, you know, for vegetation, etc. So we kind of wanted to make. That kind of accessible still, but then still also have some foliage and something that looks nice was the idea with the trellises hugging the building there.
Yep. As far as the building goes, it will be steel structure with that wood wrap around the bottom just on the front. And then. Our plan is to have snow bars on the top of the building, the roof. To hold the snow as much as it can on the roof and then. With that awning. Any, you know, anything that comes off that roof hopefully would hit the awning and then kind of fall off from there with with very minimal things coming off the roof, snow coming off the roof. Let's see what else we got. Sorry, this is our first time, so thank you for having us. There is a garage door. You can kind of see the look and feel here of the front garage door is going to be that glass, if not shaded glass. To add some some. Cool architecture feel to the front of the the building and then again, using lots of. Woods and kind of. Neutral tones to. Match the rest of the the commercial space there, things that are already built. This is kind of going into that trellis of what the the side vegetation will hopefully look like. Again, shade tolerant on the east side and then. Some sun loving vine on the other side. Kind of it. Did we miss anything?
See questions.
After you, after Meredith does that.
Is this to replace the building you're in right now over there on Commerce Avenue?
Um, no, we are in our garage currently, so we are an additional CrossFit gym to the one that is on Commerce. Yeah, yeah.
Your Bloomingdale's in.
Exactly.
Okay. And I also would just realize that we need to open the public hearing on the side.
Yes, and then you can take everything that you just heard into.
Yeah. Make a motion, we open the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor? All right.
All right.
And then we're taking consideration everything we just heard. Okay, thanks. Okay.
You could be a better policewoman. I'm very sorry. I've been slacking on my whip cracking, you guys.
You had the break that threw me off.
Okay. Are you ready? For the staff report? Yes. Okay, so as Mr. And Mrs. Dorazi have so wonderfully summarized, this is a proposal to open a new commercial. Indoor recreation facility as defined in code to conduct some CrossFit activities in the Village Commercial Subdivision. Center over there off of Dine Hard. This is in the side of the development that remains yet to be built, so there's. Into three additional lots over there to really complete this commercial center's complete development. After it was initially planned back in the nineteen seventies. So in reviewing this application, the design itself, the proposal for use itself. Fit in quite well with the existing subdivision and buildings designed there. The one two quirky things about it relate to. The relationship that old plat has to this development being that there is a yet not quite utilized. Utility and stormwater easement running through the back fifteen feet of the entire subdivision in that.
Yeah.
But currently there are no utilities located in there and it is not on any known master plans to run any utilities back there. So it actually just increases the setback required for the applicants. So in discussion with the city engineer Morgan, as well as through comments that have been received from the HOA president, who is one of the lambs. Over there, there has been indication that it could be achievable to vacate a section of that rear utility. Easement to allow that area to be used as buildable space. To have a roof covering going all the way back there, have vertical structure going all the way back there. And then at the risk of the applicants, they could put like a patio, so there are folks that have put little patios into utility easements before. With the knowledge that on a very, very bad day, if the utility needs to be dug up, you could find. A hole in your backyard, given that there's nothing underground, that risk is quite low. So they, it's been recommended that they have two options in navigating their existing site plan. Either pursue the vacation that utility easement. Or. They can reduce the size of the building, which shouldn't have a significant impact on the design, but would rather have more of an impact on their ability to use the building. In its most athletic setting. So they've indicated that they would like to pursue that vacation of easement process. It would entail submitting a legal description for the area to be vacated. It would include a public hearing before yourselves and the city council. And then it would. Go live with the property in perpetuity. I'm sure it would inspire some of the neighboring properties into potentially doing the same, should it be effective? But if it should not, then the pathway to receive a building permit would be to reduce any building element that's currently designed to be in that fifteen foot easement area. And they understand that two pronged approach. This is generally summarized in your discussion section of your staff report. And then the other quirky thing that I noticed. In the final review of this application and in initial discussions with the Dorazis. They had proposed to cover the sidewalk area initially with. Just an awning, a simple awning that can protect that sidewalk from. Incessant snow removal and then that would lead to a little bit of drippage onto the parking spaces in the front, but. When we looked at the code, you need to have a setback of a certain number of feet in the community commercial zone. However, with this subdivision, there is a platted area for a four foot sidewalk that actually needs to be probably closer to a five foot sidewalk to meet modern ADA standards. And the language within the community commercial code identifies priority or preference for sidewalk and pedestrian areas to be covered. With some kind of protective roof covering. Not a Western storefront. We don't like those. So I would defer to the commission, given there is that sidewalk easement. Whether you would feel comfortable with a roof covering extending out into that front five foot setback area. I would see it as appropriate, especially given it does not abut a public right of way that is maintained by. The city or another public agency, so any encroachment would just be into the shared parking common area of the subdivision itself. And would be a matter to work out with a future snow removal operator, but it would not be encroaching into public resources, for example. So it would be reasonable if you guys wished to to see. A covered sidewalk to grant that wish. Other than that, it's an extremely flat lot. It's fairly basic and small in size. It is considered infill commercial development and it is fortunately adjacent pretty much directly to emergency. pretty much directly to emergency services if anybody works out too hard. Um, so that should be generally okay. Um, other than that, um, I've identified that the rear setback laundry is, is yet to be resolved, um, but as a matter of five feet in either direction, either vacate the five feet or ten feet that you'd like to have or get out of the fifteen feet that's in the way at the current moment. Um, and then there's snow storage, um, is not required to be on the site, given this is part of an area that has communal snow storage in the big green lawn area that is also sometimes the play area for small children. Thus far, I have not heard of strange objects turning up in the spring, but that is up to the subdivision to manage. Um, and then other than that, staff has reviewed this and deems it to be in general conformance with the commercial design standards. Um, and believes that they can meet the requirements based on your discussion and further review today. With that, I stand for any questions?
Commissioners, any questions for Meredith?
Okay, we'll move on to engineering. Morgan.
Hello commissioners. Um, Meredith covered some of my comments also. As we worked through this application, um, the, my first comment on there is about the, the patio that extends into the the utility easement and service easement in the back. Meredith described that it needs to be vacated or the building needs to be reduced. Um, through the vacation process, the water department will also analyze if they need any additional width. Um, and that will be that vacation process. Um, let's see, they submitted a stormwater report with this application and I just had a few comments on it that were pretty general. One of them was the runoff leading to the front door. Um, so, and, um, covering might help with that, especially if they had gutters or something to capture some of that runoff. Um, we just want to make sure it's, it meets ADA requirements too in the height and width. Um, and make sure, I'm sure the building department will check the structural side of it on that component. Um, and then with all projects within city water services, we need a water fixture unit sheet to help size this water service for the property, which goes on to determine um, fees and connection fees for the water that will be provided to the building. Um, and then just clarification on the applicant uh, identified that the sewer main connection might be in Thula Street. So we'll need more plans with that since Thula is a public right-of-way and how that's going to be. That's all I have for this application. Thank you.
Remember by chance with the Lamb building, that's not that old, did they have to connect over to Thula?
They did not. They're connected into like the interior parking lot area. Um, and so Jeff Bateman, the sewer district director, indicated that if they need to connect to that parking lot service line, they can, but he would prefer and they would receive better pressures if they, um, take the line out to Thula. So either or, but the lambs are connected to the parking lot.
They have options.
Yeah.
Any questions for Morgan? All right. This is a public hearing, so we will open up the public comment. Is there anybody online or on the phone that wishes to comment regarding this application? And if you're on the phone, you may need to hit star six to unmute yourself. If there's anybody here in the audience that wishes to comment regarding this application? Last call, anybody online or on the phone who wishes to comment?
And then you do have this comment from Elise Bitten that went to Rachel, so I didn't forward it directly because I didn't realize we had it until right before the meeting. So I was like, print it out. Have you all read Elise Bitten's comment in support of the application? Mr. Thompson.
How about if you want to read it real quick?
Okay. CrossFit Eclivity proposes to construct a gym on the site located at three oh nine Dine Hard in McCall, Idaho. We support this plan. It would create a building that suits the area's current style and feel. Vince and Janay Drazee started CrossFit Eclivity less than a year ago. In that time, they have created a community-oriented workout experience that attracts people from all walks of life and supports local efforts. Their first year has gone well and they are already ready to expand with a new and larger facility. We as local McCall builders have gone through both city and county planning and zoning processes, and we believe this gym is a great plan that matches McCall's vision for the area. We support them in this endeavor. We thank you for your time and consideration in approving their plan. Elise and Dusty Bitten.
Right, with that, we'll put close the comment. Commissioners, any questions for staff or the applicant before we close the public hearing?
I do. Um, so all the buildings along there, it's, they have kind of this hodgepodge of sidewalks or black, never over trees or what have you. Um, on, on lambs, which is where you're going to build next to is uh, I, I guess it's like five, six inches, but they have a sidewalk that's right up there. Would your sidewalk be an extension of theirs as well? I would imagine where, how does that all work together? Uh, it's not that it has to be because everything else is all hodgepodge, but it would, I mean, it would be something to consider.
That's our understanding.
Okay.
Yeah.
Cool.
Yeah.
Love a connected sidewalk.
Love it.
So my question was, uh, how are, how do we document, uh, our decision on the awning over the sidewalk? Is that something we need to state in our motion or can we just do it in our conversation and you have it for the record?
I would prefer that you state it somehow as a condition, like present a revised design that includes a drawing of the awning over the sidewalk.
Is that already in our, it looks like we already have that.
It is.
Yes.
Yes.
That is under the conditions of approval currently.
Yep.
In our back.
But I would also like to hear your deliberation on whether you value it or not.
I think the awning would break up the front facade pretty nicely. Um, otherwise it's just kind of a blank front with a garage door and a mandor, right?
Okay, any other questions for staff or the applicant before we close the public hearing? And make a motion, we close the public hearing. Motion second, all in favor? All right. Okay, deliberations. I think the building seems to be pretty nice. Seems like I think it would pretty well fit within there. Again, there's a little bit of everything from the seventies, eighties, nineties. Little bit of everything.
All there, so. All in the village.
I would say that just kind of have to be aware with any snow removal, if they do that awning to make sure whoever's removed the snow, they may have to do additional snow to get it farther away so it doesn't get ran into, but that's up for them to.
The snow from the awning, you mean?
No. If the awning is going to be out over, just because they're not used to it, theirs, it's be aware of it. They may have to push the snow out a little farther from the awning to allow for them to have the snow removed. Because the removal is done by HOA. Something to be aware of for them, but you know, see it causing any issues necessarily with the building or anything. It'd be nice to have the covered walkway.
I like covered walkways. They look, if they're done right then, they look good. I think they get the real, real, real nice amenity.
And then I'm pretty familiar with the rear of some of those buildings and there is a little bit of everything behind some of the, that easement area. There's steps and walkways and kids' playpens. There's a little bit of variety of that stuff in the back and it just backs to additional storage units. So it's really not affecting anybody to the rear, whatever they do. So if they're willing to to assume the risk of if, and up until it gets vacated. I'm comfortable with that. Doesn't appear that anything will happen back there, really. Especially if sewer district's not doing the water, city water, or then verifying with Idaho power. Doesn't seem like it'd be anywhere it's going to be used. There'll still be some distance, some distance would still be available there as well. It's pretty good to me in general. So any other thoughts or anybody else's thoughts?
Just to chime in that I support covered walkways in general and specifically in this instance as well.
Sir, is any, oh, go ahead, Dave. Okay, well, if there's any other questions, comments, concerns, or anything, I'm open for a motion. I move.
I move to approve DR twenty-four twenty-nine with the staff recommended conditions of approval and direct staff to draft findings and conclusions consistent with the commission's deliberations.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second to approve. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries, it's approved.
For sticking in there and staying.
Okay, we're going to move to subdivision, subdivision twenty-four. You know, we have two of these, the same one should, can we do these together?
You can.
That's all right?
Yeah, just make sure that the motions are separate, please.
Separate motions when we get to that point. Okay. Well, then I'm going to open up, make a motion, we open the public hearing for subdivision twenty-four oh five and final plat twenty-four or twenty-five oh one.
And the public hearing pertains to the preliminary plat. The final plat is just here.
Okay, yes. Okay, we have motion second, all in favor? And do we have a Rick here to present or?
I'm here representing the Faraday family. Uh, my wife Deb's here and my son Todd. And the reason that we, we applied for this, uh, sub twenty-four, five and FP twenty-five oh one is that we wanted to, we're trying to sell, uh, that that lot on the top of the hill that's Forest Street to our son and daughter-in-law. And we decided we wanted a little lot split off of that for us, maybe in the future. So that's why we're here. So, um, I thought it was going to be pretty simple. It turned out not to be so simple, but that's okay. We're here and, uh, um, Meredith has been really great to work with. So if you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer.
Commissioners, any questions for Rick? Okay. Great. Meredith.
So as Rick summarized, um, this is typically, uh, a form of application with a small lot split that you might see in the form of a record of survey on your consent agenda. However, it was determined upon intake, looking at the record of survey and the subdivision plating history in the vicinity and including this site. Um, that prior splits or prior, um, lot line movements had occurred since the date in which um, a property is declared a lot of record according to McCall City Code. So if a lot has been modified after that, um, lot of record establishment date, then, um, it does need to go through the subdivision plating process over again so that it can be reviewed for, um, central district health sanitary restrictions to make sure that things are still compatible and form and scale with the neighborhood, um, as well as ensure that there's enough scrutiny by the public agency into whether or not this is possible and manageable. Um, so they did work with Ralph Miller, their surveyor, who we all know quite well, to submit a preliminary plat and final plat application. Um, I've decided to bring back the tradition in very small-scale subdivision plaits of one to two or two to three lots where we, um, consider running the subdivision preliminary plat and final plat concurrently. Um, so that we can reduce the need for a number of public hearings, um, as well as the noticing costs and, um, cost for consultant sign that that can take, um, because it is such a small scale of change. Um, there are going to be times where we do need to go through all of that noticing, such as if it's associated with more major impacts to neighboring properties. Um, but we've determined that that's really not applicable in this case. It, it feels just like a normal record of survey, simple lot split between parties does. Um, and they're not doing what's considered the creation of an adverse subdivision, um, where you snip one here, snip one there, and suddenly there, there's the whole neighborhood. Um, so with that, uh, you still need to apply the subdivision preliminary and final plat standards, which includes opening the public hearing, which you have done for the subdivision preliminary plat, um, taking in all of the evidence, which includes, um, combining and reconfiguring two existing remainder parcels of point nine-three and one point eight-two acres into three new lots. Um, there will be a lot of approximately one acre, approximately a quarter acre and approximately one and a half acres resulting from this reconfiguration. Um, and that does meet the standards for the low-density residential zone or R4 zone that this is located within. Um, the total acreage is about two point seven-five acres. So it's fairly low density for that zone at the end of the day with the splits, um, being considered. Um, the average density in dwelling units per acre is still less than one. So it's even a rural density in this area, um, and all minimum street frontages are met, um, with the design of the subdivision as proposed and all minimum property sizes are met with the subdivision design as proposed. Um, Ralph Miller did submit some clarification and answers to Morgan's comments relating to driveway accesses and whether they would be shared or whether they would not be shared. Um, and identified which things would be accessed off of where in his submission of, um, the final plat. And so you'll see in the conditions of approval for both of these, I recommended, um, submitting a revised plaque clarifying driveway access for each lot. We need to confirm exactly that what Ralph resubmitted does address that comment. So I would leave it in your conditions of approval um, for prior to scheduling a hearing before the McCall City Council. Um, and then other normal recommendations for prior to recreation of the final plat are included in there such as the usual signature by central district health. This will be on the city sewer system. So they don't need to do the groundwater monitoring and testing that's necessary to determine if septic is a viable option. Um, and then your typical condition to receive final engineering approval of both the, um, GIS information matched to our grid coordinate plane system as well as the way that it looks on the plat itself. Um, I've included the expiration timelines for both preliminary and final plat on there. And then one consideration that I would ask you to make is to determine whether or not you feel that the city council's review of this should require a public hearing or whether you feel comfortable recommending waiving that public hearing. Um, based on what level of impact to the neighborhood or degree of scrutiny this might need. This has been publicly noticed for this meeting. I haven't received any comments from the public and it's been publicly noticed actually three times in the newspaper. Um, and then there were time periods we had to postpone, um, for some family things. And now we're back and I've received no indication that there's any problem amongst the public with this process. So that I'll stand for any questions?
Right. Commissioners, any questions for Meredith? Then we'll go to engineering. Morgan.
Commissioners, I only had a few comments on this. There were a few comments, but they're mostly relating to the access for all the properties. Um, so it was just more clarifying of how access for all the lots, um, occur. And it sounds like Ralph might have provided an updated plat and some responses to my questions. Um, and then so figuring out the driveways and how the easements are falling and what they're for were most of my comments. Uh, but those can be finalized with final engineering approval. And then as, as Meredith's mentioned, um, once this is finalized, then we look through and review the digital data for, for conformance to our digital data submission standard guide. Um, which all happens behind the scenes before we sign the plaits. Please let me know if you have any questions.
Commissioners, any questions for Morgan? All right. This is a public hearing for subdivision twenty-four oh five. So we will go to public comment for subdivision twenty-four oh five. Is there anybody online or on the phone that wishes to comment regarding that application? Or anybody here in the audience wishes to comment regarding that application? Okay, with that, we will close the public comment. And commissioners, any questions for staff or the applicant before we close the public hearing?
None for me.
I think this one seems pretty, pretty clean. So with that, I will make a motion, we close the public hearing for subdivision 2405. Second? Motion and a second to close the meeting, all in for a close here. All in favor? Hi. Hi. Any opposed? Okay. Commissioners, any thoughts, questions, concerns? Again, this one looks pretty cut and dry.
My, my question is, what does FP stand for?
Final plat.
Final plat, awesome. I don't see that very often, it's the first one of this year.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it does. Oh, go ahead.
Oh, I, I think it's pretty straightforward, and I think we should also recommend waiving the, the public hearing when we, you know, pass it along, just due to the scale and the nature of it and the lack of public comment to date.
Yep, I would agree. With that, it sounds like you're primed to make a motion.
All right, I move to recommend approval of sub 2405 to the McCall City Council with the staff recommended conditions of approval.
Second? And, and waive the hearing?
And, and a recommendation to waive the public hearing due to the scale and nature of the application and the lack of public comment to date.
So then second?
Okay, yeah, good. Okay, now we have a motion and second. All in favor? Hi. Hi. Okay.
All right. I move to recommend approval of final plat 2501 to the McCall City Council with the staff recommended conditions of approval, and also recommend waiving the public hearing due to the reasons I said previously.
So second? All right, we have a motion and a second to approve, all in favor? Hi. Hi. All right, motion carries, it's approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for hanging in there.
Yeah.
I love it when you're here, Rich.
Okay, if we have any signs, I don't remember. No sign.
Not a one.
And then discussion on the training, so be aware, everybody, remember in af, next March, we'll have a meeting on the fourth and then a training on the sixth. Two meetings that week.
Correct.
And we'll be back in this room?
Correct.
Or will we do it in the little room?
You'll do it in this room.
Okay.
Because I believe the public will probably also want to be trained.
The training is in here then, so that's why it's a meeting.
Yep.
So maybe it'll be out Thursday.
Have you sent out an invite for that yet?
I don't think so.
If, if you could, whenever you get a chance to block it on my calendar, I will put a placeholder in, but just to keep me.
Yes.
Thank you.
And again, I don't know if anybody's already sent the information in, but if there's any items that you feel would be beneficial for the training, please make sure you get them to Meredith.
I think thus far I have a wee little code workshop on planned unit development amenities and alleviations. What is working, what does not, what might we need? And then I also have a small list of potential code revisions for you guys to consider based on experiences we've been having for the last 12 to 18 months. Although we are in the in-between period on the, the fate of the impact area, there are some issues with the city code that still remain. And I have a soft blessing to at least start walking through those with the commission, so that we might be able to find some resolution on things within city limits. And then I also have our small quasi-judicial proceedings 101 with Bill Punkinny. I know that you're all veterans at this point, but he loves to remind you the rules. And then we will also have a state-of-the-state legislature and all things involving what's going on with land use in the state of Idaho, short-term rentals, any legislation asserted or note that should be mentioned. And then if you have any other thoughts, qualms, queries, or inspiring ideas, just let me know. That covered our subject matter, do we think?
That gives us pretty good.
Okay.
And to put in.
I think we're not going to cover everything in two hours.
No, you will not. And I will get you snatched.
Yes!
All right. Well, that we.
I do have one, maybe just Meredith, if you want to add this to the list, anything that we could do to make your life easier. You know, calling out things in our deliberations, or following a process more formally, or anything along those lines. I would be open to how we can help you.
Sure. Thanks, Liz. And then your March agenda is fairly light. We will have that storage unit coming back to us. We will have, I believe, a small residential design review on Lake Street.
East Lake Street?
West.
West.
Exciting. I think they're both exciting. Trying to think, Rachel, did we have anything else that came in for March? Oh, that's April stuff, then. Ah, yes, so we have our annual review of one of the short-term rental conditional use permits, so that has been submitted. So the condition of approval was to review it with an annual report for the first year with a public hearing, so that the neighbors can provide an input on how it went. And I've received that annual report, so we will be noticing it for March. But other than that, it should be
And a review for what did you say?
A short-term rental with an occupancy greater than 11 people.
Ten.
Ten, greater than 10, sorry, sorry. Anything else for me today?
I think that completes. Did you end it, Tony?
I make a motion at 7:30 that we adjourn the meeting.
Second, that one, a motion and a second to adjourn, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi. See ya.
Good night, everybody.
Thanks, Bill.